Sixteenth, two thousand and one, at the courthouse in Hayward. President on behalf of the board, Al Gerber, Mark Olson, Steve Kelsey, and joining us virtually Laura Rusk from the zoning office. Kathy Marks and Pat Brown are present, Jay Kozdowski joining us virtually. Those persons who have any pertinent testimony will be afforded the opportunity to do so. As recognized by the chairman, that person shall clearly state their full name before giving testimony. Each hearing will follow this order, reading of the application, submission of the file to the board applicant statement and presentation of evidence, testimony of those in support of the application, statements from persons in objection to the application, rebuttal as permitted by the board and decision by the board. Orderly procedure requires that each sideshow proceed without interruption by the other. All testimony will be addressed to the board and there will be no answers or, excuse me, no questions or arguments between individuals. Any persons agreed by a decision, the board may appeal the decision to the circuit court within thirty days of the date following the board's decision letter. The day following the signing of the board's decision letter is the first day of the thirty day appeal filing period. This public hearing has been published as a class two notice in accordance with chapter nine eighty-five Wisconsin statutes and so I found record in the Sawyer County Gazette. The hearing will follow this order. Variance application, new business and adjournment. First thing on the agenda, did everyone have an opportunity and get a copy of the minutes of the October nineteenth meeting?
Yes.
Any additions, corrections, or deletions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Motion to made and seconded, all those in favor of the motions, signify or saying aye? All post same sign, minutes are approved.
Mr. Chairman, tonight we have one variance application. Public hearing in the town of Radisson, variance twenty-one zero zero eight, owner David and Susan Schreiner Trust, part of government lot four, lot A, CSM two twenty-four, number two thirty-three, section zero-nine, town thirty-nine north, range zero-seven west, parcel zero-two-two seven-three-nine zero-nine five-four-zero-seven. One point zero seven total acres, zone residential recreational one, RR one. Application requested for the construction of a two-story thirty-three by five foot, thirty-five feet by seven foot with eaves dwelling addition, which is located fifty-two feet to the ordinary high watermark of Blueberry Lake. Only twenty-three feet by five feet of this would be considered for this variance as the remaining ten feet is beyond the required setback. All other setbacks would be met for this project. Variance requested is section six point one, Sawyer County zoning, Sherone Wetland Protection Ordinance. Sherone setbacks would require the prior granting of variance for any structure less than seventy-five feet to the ordinary high watermark. The proposed variance is requesting a fifty-two foot setback to the ordinary high watermark. The structure would not be eligible for the two hundred square foot lateral expansion. Oh, and we have the staff report for that. Applicant is David and sooner Susan Schreiner. Property location sixty-seven thirty-nine and Brecky Lane, Cooteray. Parcel number zero-two-two seven-three-nine zero-nine five-four-zero-seven. Summary request is the applicants David and Susan Schreiner are requesting a variance to build a five-foot by twenty-three-foot cabin addition, which is located, the cabin is located twenty-five feet at the closest point to the ordinary high watermark of Blueberry Lake. The cabin addition would be at fifty-two feet to the ordinary high watermark and on the non-lake side of the existing cabin. All other setbacks would be met. The property has the existing non-conforming cabin and has not been issued any land use permits in the past. It appears to have been built pre-zoning, being that this structure is not completely located beyond thirty-five feet from the ordinary high watermark is not eligible for the two hundred square foot lateral addition. Certified soil test has been submitted for a future mound system to be located west of the existing garage. The applicant, the applicant is applying for relief of section six point one, the Sawyer County zoning Sherone Wetland Protection Ordinance for reduced ordinary high watermark setback. The required setback for a new structures here would be seventy-five feet to the ordinary high watermark. Please see the attached inspection report that I completed as part of my onsite visit on August twelfth of two thousand and twenty-one. See. We have the town board has approved this with no additional comments. There were eight opinion letters sent out, six were returned, six would not, no objections. I have no objections at all. Andrew Skelton. I have no objections to this, I believe that the new structure would add extra value to the property and to the community. Leonard Reese. I have no, no objections to this, Robert Farrer. I have no objections to this, Robert Nordquist. I have no objections to this, Ronald Hense. I have no objections to this, best wishes to the Shriners on their project. Heisel Living Trust by Martha G. Heisel. That is all I have.
Okay. Are the Shriners here or someone to represent them? Have any testimony you'd like to share with us? You need to identify yourself, sir.
Okay.
So you're Mr. Schreiner, right?
I'm David Schreiner, this is my wife Susan.
Thank you.
We're hopeful of being granted the variance. We are would like to improve the cabin on the lot so that we could eventually have it be more of a retirement home than just a cabin. And that's the reason that we were looking for the addition, we're hoping to expand the garage a little bit and then add a second story so that we'll have additional bedroom space.
Okay, I'm reading, was that off, did you have any other testimony to give? Reading through your request, it looks like you've researched other possibilities and exhausted them, this is your best option?
Yeah, it's the option with okay, it would be the option that would have the least amount of variances and stuff needed. Our original plan was to build across the road from our cabin, just a storage shed and then convert the garage. When you get across the road from our cabin, our property is quite a bit of wetland back there. And so there would be different variances having to go through DNR and stuff. And with that and setbacks from the road, there didn't appear to be enough room to be able to do an addition there. We did consider other spots on the cabin side of the road. Because of the driveway and the septic system, it really narrows down and decreases the amount of space that we have available in the end. This was the option that would give us what we need and have the least amount of impact on anything else.
Your current septic, is that just a holding tank?
Yes.
And now you're putting in a mound?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, sir. The other board members.
I saw somewhere in the notes, there was a discussion that you needed the addition because it wasn't feasible to put the stairway to a second floor within the perimeter of the existing garage.
Can't hear. To set up the second story, the way we would like to, if we put it up into the garage, it would come right up into the middle and basically then trying to break down the space into bedrooms and stuff in the upper portion would be more difficult.
What is the dimension of your garage space? That's going to be two stories?
It will be, I believe, twenty-four by, I'm trying to think.
Twenty-five by thirty-four?
Yeah, yeah, that does sound right.
I have a question, you know, you talk about, you looked at not being feasible for stairs, adding a second story to the garage, but you can add, you can go up on the cabin also.
Right.
And not the garage or both without a variant.
Yes, but we would like to add, in addition, it's a relatively small garage by the time you try to store, store a boat and vehicles in it. And so we were hoping to expand the area of the garage somewhat.
The intention would be to expand the garage on the ground level and have living space above, so the entire first floor of the garage would remain garage.
Yes.
Plus an additional five feet?
Right.
With the addition.
Correct.
Would you enter the garage from the same direction?
Yes.
As currently?
Yeah, we had considered moving it to the west end, but because of the, that's the only place that the mound system could go, that wasn't feasible. And we also had considered moving the driveway that way then, that would have given us some room on the other side, but to try and get the mound system in there, that's the only location that it could go.
Okay, so I get, I got another question, so what's, what is the, your unique property condition? And when I was out there, virtually, everything along the road there, their lots are cut by the road. They, I mean, I don't think the topography changes by more than three feet by all the properties along that road. I don't see anything unique on, on the property. Pardon? I don't know, I don't see what's your unique property condition. Can you explain what you think is unique about your property that you need to have a variance when there's other options?
There aren't other workable options that we could find that would give us the additional space and be able to then expand upward. The, the only place that we, without decreasing the garage space that there is there currently, like we could put a stairway to the upper level somewhere within that garage that, but that, putting that stairway in there that would, would then decrease the area of the garage. Now, we would already, we're trying to increase the garage space by a little, so we
No, I understand that, but I was getting to the, what's unique about your property from any other property out in that area?
Well, there's no place for us to put an additional storage.
And there may not be, but you still have to have a unique property condition to, we have a three-step test we have to follow, so I'm just, when I was reading through, he said you had all these alternatives, but, and you got rid of them, but, you know, there's, I didn't see anything different from your property, from the neighbors on either side of you, they're, they're all similar, lots similar to topography.
Yes, they are. Yeah. Yeah, so we, we wanted to build a storage building across the street. Now, the topography of our land is such that the wetland comes up so close to the road on that side that there's no room to put a building there.
Understood.
Okay, so then additionally, we would like to be able to put in the mound system so we can make it more of a permanent residence. And the only place that the mound system can go on the property is just to the west of the garage. Okay, when you take those things into consideration, then the, the way the lot is set out and stuff and where you need to have a driveway and everything leaves you no room to put a storage building anywhere else on the lot.
Can they go with an option of another holding tank, or do they have to go to the mound if the main change?
They, in Sawyer County, I mean, it is system of choice to, to have a holding tank or mound. This is the only feasible location for a mound or any type of soil absorption system. As indicated by, by Max Oil Test, that the area to the north of the planned mound drops foot, foot and a half in elevation and the soil is not suitable, so you never meet the separation requirements.
Reason I was asking is I didn't know if you went with the holding tank again, would that change your options? And maybe I'm getting beyond the scope of what we're doing.
I guess, you know, we consider a mound system to be a superior option to holding tanks. And that's the reason that we would go for the mound system and we, the soil testing has been approved so that it is feasible.
It served, the holding tanks have been there pre-zoning, so I mean, it's been a three-bedroom cabin for years with the holding tanks. If you're going to go year-round, you can go with the bigger holding tank. There's also
I don't
newer systems out there that also use, that take less room than a mound system that are similar to a mound system, so they're, they're more money, but there's, there's other, I guess what I'm saying, I guess I'm saying that wanting to upgrade to that is, you know, your preference, but in reality, the other system has worked for a long time also.
It, indeed it has, but again, when you look at expenses for future and stuff like that, you're talking right, right now having to, you know, two hundred to three hundred dollars per pump and doing that, if we were to live there full-time, you know, probably at least four to six times a year. And so looking forward and stuff to have a more permanent solution is what we're trying to do.
Yep, no, I understand that. But what you're proposing is going to be there for another seventy years. That's too close to the lake and the majority of your property is too close to the lake from the seventy-five foot and, and if you're going to retire here, that could change, you could sell next week or, I mean, I, we hear that a lot, I'm going to retire up here, but we have to look at that, what you're, what you're proposing is going to be here for a long time and you guys might not be. And you're twenty, twenty-plus feet from the lake and this will be here a long time, it's adding more impervious surface to the already impervious surface that's too close to zoning and
It is a twenty-three foot by five-foot area that that would be adding.
Yeah, that's under seventy-five feet to the lake, I mean, my just rough calculations, you got eleven hundred and ninety-three feet, that's under seventy-five feet to the lake and you're going to add
The other thing I just would like to clarify is, is you did mention that it's always been a three-bedroom cabin and it has not. It has one full bedroom and one kind of bedroom. The, the, the one bedroom is a, we, we do have some bunk beds and stuff in there now and use it as a bedroom, but it is a pass-through from the, the living dining area of the cabin back to the laundry area and furnace room.
Did you look, investigate possibly going up a second story on, on the main residence partially as well as part of the existing garage, which you had worked with the footprint?
We did not really consider that one because if we have to, if, if we were allowed to expand the garage, it would cause the least amount of impact and again, it would keep the construction and everything farther away from the lake.
No, I think we all understand what you're, what you're trying to do, what we're getting to is there is options that don't require a variance that you can do to get the added square feet you want, maybe not ideally the way you're, you're envisioning it, but to grant a variance, it's the least we're, we're supposed to grant the least needed to satisfy. And when there are options available that don't require a a variance and don't increase the impervious surface, it's hard to say that allowing this is the, the least needed to satisfy.
I I guess we'd really like to do this, but I, I we have considered many other options. Again, when we wanted to build across the road, it's, it's a dead-end road where the third lot from the end, there's a setback that you have to stay thirty-three feet from the center line plus another thirty feet back from the right-of-way, so you lose sixty-three feet of your property right off the top. Then you have the wetland in the back that there's a forty-foot setback requirement from that, so that reduces between the sixty-three foot and the forty-foot, reduces it to small enough so you can't put a building on that side. If you try to build on the cabin side, the driveway cuts through there so that there's not enough room on the, excuse me, can't get my directions correct, on the south edge, there's not enough room width-wise to maintain the lot line setbacks, roadway setbacks, so you wouldn't be able to put a building there. So the constraints of the lot, then if you want to put in, if we put in the mound septic system again, that decreases anything that would be available on the north side of the driveway. By putting in the mound system, we could expand the garage to the west, but the mound system, the length that is needed to get the, I mean, the plumbers and everything, they checked that out, but to get what you'd need for the mound system, it, it comes up within whatever the setback from the garage has to be.
No, I, I understand all that, I, I've seen it and I, I've looked at all that. But there's also, you know, a unique hardship, a necessary hardship that we have to look at and the need for more living space and a bigger garage. How is that not just for the convenience of the owner? Again, with the option of going laterally, going up or down, can put a basement in or a second story.
I'm not sure that you could put a basement in when we're only
No, I, I understand, I'm just stating, I'm just stating what the law, what the law says, up or down, so.
Yeah. Okay. But I, I mean, we put two years' worth of thought into this, trying to be the least disruptive we can and still follow all the regulations. And again, we, we do feel that the constraints of our lot, especially the wetland being involved, that we understand the reason why that needs to be protected and everything. We also understand why the lake needs to be protected. And taking all of those things into consideration, I really do feel that the small area that would be granted as a variance would be, well, like I said, it's small.
Would the two roof lines remain essentially the same?
Yes.
House and the garage roof line?
Yes, except the, again, garage roof line would go up by one story.
If I'm reading this elevation map correctly, it appears as though the lake side of the property is higher than the roadside of the property?
Yes.
So, anything running off of the roadside from the house or from the garage would not run towards the lake?
Correct.
Okay, any additional questions of the applicant?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? Okay, anyone speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, discussion by the board.
Well, I, I just again start out, I don't, I didn't see anything unique about this property compared to all the adjoining properties. Every property has to deal with setbacks from everything and that whole area is pretty similar. And if there's not a unique property limitation and like I stated, I don't see what the hardship is when there, when there is options available already for for expansion without getting a variance or adding any impervious surface and no harm to public interest, I think there is some, you you stated that it probably would run away from the lake, but almost twelve hundred feet is already within seventy-five feet of the lake and there are twenty-three feet on the front. You're adding, seems like a little bit, but it puts them over two thousand square feet and that additional hundred and fifteen plus the additional part that's outside of the seventy-five feet that we're not even looking at, so that's putting a pretty big footprint on there. So that's just my thoughts for opening up discussion.
Mark, you lost me. Where's this almost two thousand foot calculation coming in? The cabin is twenty-three by twenty-three, right?
Yeah, and then the garage is thirty-four or twenty-four because you take ten feet off.
Yeah.
So twenty-four by twenty. Unless I typed the number wrong, you got twenty-three by thirty-one.
Yeah.
Twenty by twenty-four for the garage that's within seventy-five feet. Get ten feet off the thirty-four, twenty foot one. So you multiply that out, it's eleven hundred and ninety-three square feet, right?
That's what you got, yeah.
I think it's typed in, and then you're adding
So
a hundred and fifteen square feet.
Yeah, I got that.
Here, so that puts you over two thousand, that's within seventy-five, under seventy-five feet to the lake. Almost twelve hundred square feet.
How much is twenty-four by twenty-three, Pat?
Twenty-four by twenty-three?
Yeah.
Three, five fifty-two.
And twenty-three by twenty-three, or is that twenty-eight?
Three by twenty-three, five twenty-nine.
What am I missing here?
I know, I got twenty-three by thirty-one is the house. And then twenty by twenty-four is the existing garage. Seventy-five foot one is framed here, so you have to take this part off, so ten feet off, that's twenty-four by twenty. Twenty-three by
There's, there's the lot, there's the number I was missing, okay, thank you.
So it's, that comes out to eleven hundred and ninety-three square feet, add another hundred and fifteen.
There, there is that existing concrete that's
I was, I was just counting the structure, I wasn't
Under the eve. Sure.
So I mean, it's even higher with decks and everything else, I was just doing the structure, just for rough numbers.
I was just doing the structure, just for rough numbers.
And there's plenty of houses that don't perk around here that are year-round that have holding tanks also. Maybe not the little gallon ones, they have upgraded them, but it's been that way for a long time and livable.
Our hands are a little bit tied because by the rules and by the way we have to look at it, there are options besides the variance and the addition. Unfortunately, we have to consider that. Just looking at it, it doesn't appear it would hurt anything, but that isn't how we have to look at this. We have to look at the rules.
The three steps.
And the three steps, that's the guidelines we have to go by. It doesn't pass three steps in the black and white as I read it. Am I interpreting that wrong? Anybody else?
That's, that's kind of my feeling. I go into all these and I try, I set up two ways, trying to look at this and that and the other thing and both sides of it. But when you got other options, I don't know how you can. We had the one where the people wanted to attach their garage, but they had plenty of place to put another garage that. Turned them down. I mean, there's all over the place. We have other things where there's other options that is hard to, hard to justify. The three step test.
Jay has his hand up and so does Laura, it looks like.
All right, let's hear it.
Laura, first.
I only wish to say, if you guys could please speak into the microphone. My bad that I couldn't be there, but it's so hard to hear you when the microphone is not geared toward your mouth. And even with the Shriners, if they could just get closer to the microphone, I have my face right up against the screen trying to hear everything and I.
I apologize.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
Jay?
Yeah, my comments are kind of regarding the sewer system as far as the holding tank versus mound system. Now, obviously, we'd much rather see a mound system. You're going to have a lot less potentials for contamination with going a mound system route over a holding tank. Yes, we are a system of choice in Sawyer County in that you have the options of choosing a holding tank versus a mound system. But from, you know, a conservation aspect, you'd much rather see a mound system in that location. Now, it's a little bit interesting that, you know, let's play the hypothetical here. Let's say there was already a mound system there. Would you be having a different conversation here this evening? And I think that's something that you would need to look at. I don't think we've ever been proposed this type of proposed mound system that's somewhat acting as his unique physical limitation. But another way to look at it is, okay, let's say that there is a mound system already there. Would that have a different mindset? And that's just a hypothetical to bring to you guys.
I would just point out that that takes the options from two to one then. He still can go vertically over the garage and the house. And the second option was he could, you know, go back further. He needs to be on seventy-five feet and add on and go up too. So, I mean, if he got, if he stayed with the holding tanks.
I think if the mound system, if the mound system is there, he wouldn't be able to go further back.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But if he stayed with the holding tanks, I'm saying that then he couldn't go back, but he can still go up on the entire piece of property, on the entire residence. If the system isn't there, he could stay with what he has and he could expand differently. So I was just saying he had two options right now because the mound system is an end. But if he's adamant on the mound system, he still has option one, which allows him to go vertically. Okay. So just goes from two options to want to be one set.
Laura, do you still have your hand up? Do you have another question?
Nope, I forgot to put it down, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Schreiner, do you have an additional comment?
I guess my only additional comment were if, if we were to just maintain the same footprint and go up, we would still need a place for that stairway. And again, that stairway would probably have to go in to the current garage, which again would decrease the area that we have available for garage. So I just want to point that out, that there is a hardship with that thought also. That was my only comment.
So really, it boils down to that the variance request is for an additional a hundred and fifteen feet, right? Twenty-three by five.
Yes, correct. Correct.
And the variance request would result in a better septic system?
And without the variance request, it would still, could still result in better septic system.
That's true.
I mean, we struggle with people where we have them take five feet of a piece of deck off that's seventy feet from the lake. And that's where I struggle with these at ninety. Majority of this cabin is under seventy-five feet and the state gave an option by state law, which gave these people where these cabins can stay around forever or they can expand in the same footprint. It used to be you couldn't, you know, and now you can. I mean, the state's given them another option pre-variance. May not be ideal, it may not be ideal. But if they add on, they're losing square footage for a stairway in the garage. They could pick it up by adding on to the actual cabin itself. I mean, this thing is twenty-five feet from the lake. I mean, it's existing non-conforming. And we're struggling on other variances where people are seventy feet from the lake and asking for a variance and get turned down. So that's just my point that the state gave options for these places that are too close to the lake where they didn't have it years ago, now they do. Before, they have to get a variance and then they, you know. It's hard to pass a three-step test when there's another option available. Even with the getting the improvement of having a mound, they could still expand the whole thing up without adding any impervious surface. They could add on to the cabin and not the garage, put a second story on the cabin part. That's another option.
I just. Certainly.
Again, part of the reason that we're looking at doing the garage as the expansion is that it would give us the additional garage space that we're looking for. Okay, that, that, I mean, we, granted, if you say we could expand the rest of the cabin, but that wouldn't. And again, that's personal preference.
Right, and that's what, and that's what, it's not a hardship. It's for the convenience of you. You've got a garage already. And if you're. And what is the hardship for getting a bigger garage when, when there's? That's what we're struggling with. We have a three-step test.
The hardship is making it into a family home. Okay, now, I, right, right now, it's a part-time cabin. And we would like it to be a home. Now, again, I know where you're going to come from on that.
Well, here, I'll cite it right to you. Circumstances of an applicant, specific circumstances of the applicant, such as a growing family or desire for a larger garage, are not a factor in deciding variances. That's from Snyder versus Waukesha County Zoning Board of Adjustment. That's one of the case law that we have to follow, where they've said circumstances unique to you guys are not reasons such as a growing family or right out of the court case, a larger garage, which is what you're asking for, is not a hardship. So we have to have three steps to pass. Unique property limitation, a hardship, no harm to public interest. The need for a larger garage nullify, I mean, that takes that one right off as a hardship. So we can't approve it based just on that with your stating you need a bigger garage. And as we keep saying, we're required to look at these three, three steps before we can pass it. You have to pass all three and we, we look at all the stuff. But when you're claiming here tonight that you need a larger garage, that's not a factor we can consider for a hardship. I'm sorry to state it, but that's.
I guess what I would consider the hardship is that we could get the storage area in other places, but because of the way our lot is formed and with the mound system and stuff, the hardship is that we can't do it any other way.
Anyone else want to explain what I'm saying? But I understand what you're saying, sir, but I'm just.
But that, and that, that's what I consider our hardship is that we have considered at least six or seven other options, all of which because of regulations and stuff become not workable.
Laura?
I think, not, I think, I mean, I know what Mark is trying to say and I think, I think that the point is being missed. What you're, what you're telling the board is what your, your wants are based on what you think your needs are. And that we can't base the decision on that. It has to be based on the three-step test. And certainly, reading through all of your stuff, and I was at your property today, I, you know, I understand that you, you did your diligence, you looked at other options. The fact remains you still have options that do not require this variance.
Mark, you said they could, you said they could expand their cabin up? Oh, I, okay, not, not, not the footprint.
No, they can go up on the cabin and the garage. Both, one, the other.
Which would give them the additional living space that they need, but just not the additional garage space.
Right. Without a variance and without increasing impervious surface.
Are there setback, maybe Pat can answer this. Setback requirements on mounds?
Did you say are, are there?
Yeah.
For.
How close to the building, how close to the lot line, how close to the road?
Correct, yes, the, the building can be as close as ten feet to the toe of that mound. And tanks have to be greater than five, five feet or greater to any structure. And then fit, it'd have to be fifty feet away from the ordinary high watermark. And then looking at Mert Mackey's soil test because of elevations, this is the highest point on that lot to put that, that mound system.
Okay.
They are fixed to that location for the mound.
Would there be any space to expand toward the road from the garage and have the mound legally placed?
My understanding, looking at Max Soil Test, no. That for the, the size of the mound that would be required, required to treat the wastewater that, and even at this, this is pinched in there.
Okay, any additional testimony? Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to either approve or deny the application as presented? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to deny the request as presented. Is there a second to that motion? Is motion to made and seconded? Discussion on the motion?
I'd, I'd be in agreement with you just based on like we discussed in our discussions on. Can't pass the three-step test. Adding more garage space is, you know, takes it right off the court on an unnecessary hardship. But even, even with that, you know, is that the minimum relief required to, you know, give them relief from the zoning ordinance? No, they have a whole nother option of expanding vertically. It may not be ideally, but they're twenty-three feet from the lake or twenty-five feet from the lake. It's, there's nothing unique on this property compared to the neighbor properties. I mean, it's the same topography, same. So I, I'm in agreement with you.
Okay, any other comments or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion have presented, saying I? I?
I.
Those in favor of the motion, four, those opposed, zero. Motion to deny passes by a vote of four to zero. Thank you. Finding the facts, as compliant options do exist and the three-step test cannot be passed, the, the motion, the application fails. Thank you, folks. What we got going on next week or next month?
We got some new business first.
Pardon?
We have some new business.
Oh, okay.
That's all right.
Got to flip it over.
Yeah.
All right. New business would be.
I got it.
The November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting day conflict. Kathy, could you find the conflict?
Okay, I was notified by the county clerk, Lynn Fitch, that county board is going to be meeting that same night on the fifteenth. If we do not want to change that, we can have the assembly room. So I'm leaving it up to you if you want to just still keep it that date and we use the assembly room or we try to change the date to a different night.
Well, the fifteenth, the week earlier is already taken, it looks like.
That's the county board for the, for the large courtroom. We would be available to have the assembly room that same night.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
I don't think it creates a conflict for our.
No, the only conflict is me.
Yeah, that's just where I was going to go. Can Jay be in two places at one time?
Yeah.
Or would, would we, Pat pinch it or something?
And we don't know. I mean, there's, I mean, a 50% chance. We don't even have a meeting that, that month. But, you know, just on the off chance that there's something contentious, you know, I'd want to be there. You know, ultimately we do have Pat who did a great role here this evening as well. So if you guys don't want to change that date, I'm, I'm fine with leaving it as well. We just wanted to bring it up.
And it would just be noted in the public notices that it's in the assembly room, not in the, the large courthouse.
Yes.
I say we leave it. I'm in favor of leaving it also.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough.
Okay, thanks.
Second item on new business.
You can go ahead.
Okay. Second item is proposed legal counsel requirements and associated fees. This is for discussion. Jay, would you like to discuss?
Yeah, we talked about that last month. And I, I told you guys to, to mull it over for a month and kind of want to hear back from, from the Board of Appeals as far as, did you want to have legal counsel present? Do you only want them present at contentious cases? Who would you potentially want to have for legal counsel? I, I guess I'm, you know, opening, opening up to the Board of Appeals as to what you want to have moving forward. And that your comments here tonight will go back to the county administrator as far as if, if that's what the board wants, then that's the route we'll go. Or otherwise, ultimately the county administrator could just potentially say, well, that's too bad. We're going to have legal counsel present there anyways. But I think any type of whether a recommendation for not having legal counsel present would certainly go a long way if that is so what you choose. So I'll open it up to you guys.
My opinion is we don't need legal counsel present. Some of our the majority of our variance requests are pretty mundane and we don't get down to the details and, and theory of law. Hell, our record in the last 40 variance requests is 39 and one. Oh, we're not screwing it up. Too bad. I don't know that there's any local legal counsel that I would consider to be an expert in, in zoning matters. You know, if they're just here to make sure we follow our own rules, we can police ourselves in, in that regard. So that's my opinion. And I'm, I'm opposed to jack in the, the fee from 500 to 800. I think that's starting to get pretty pricey.
Well said, Al.
Yep, I said the same thing last month and we, when we talked about it, they're just going to be here to tell us, Pat, you have to do the three-step test. We can have somebody for free tell us that. I'll do it every meeting.
You always do.
You know, I, I, I would like the option to ask to have counsel when we know there's contentious ones. I mean, we all knew the Miller one was going to be contentious. So that one would be one. I'd prefer to have legal counsel. At, just to be there, but like I say, we have better, we have better options to ask Jay something regarding the zoning ordinance or how it's being enacted and, and, and utilized more than we get from the lawyer. The lawyer can give us a legal opinion, but on the fly it doesn't work that way. So I, I mean, just for getting legal answers, not zoning answers, I guess for a contentious one, if we're doing something completely off the ball, it'd be nice to have one there not running the meeting. I'm against that. Where they take over.
Yeah. And between the knowledge is within the zoning office now and the homework that you do, Mark, whenever there's case law, you seem to, someone seems to be able to find how it applies to whatever particular variance. We happen to be looking at that, that night. And I like your comment about if we know there's going to be contentious when asked to have a, have someone present.
We, we all know, and we all know it when we see the page, which ones are going to be contentious.
Can I talk?
Yep.
Boy, it's hard for me to be at home and not look at you boys and start waving my hands and stuff. I think we can count on Jay to let us know when something's going to be contentious because he's in the trenches and he knows when the calls start coming. And he knows.
I would say 90% of the time I can do that.
Yep. I agree.
There's going to be that 10% where I am anticipating not being contentious. And then all of a sudden they show up in the masses and maybe even the masses have legal counsel, you know, against it. So which, I mean, 10% is 10%.
But somebody having legal counsel doesn't scare me either.
No.
I mean, and we have people from all over the county on, on the Board of Appeals and you know, y'all, y'all hear the stuff going on when you know something's going to, I mean, somebody hears something, you can tell.
Is that going to cause problems with your budgeting and not charging more on this random contentious case versus the standard ones?
So, I mean, ultimately with the discussion here this evening, I'm going to go back to Mr. Hoff, the county administrator, and tell him that, you know, as per the recommendation of the Board of Appeals, they do not want to have legal counsel present there. At that point, I do not need to increase my fees up to $800 for appeals and for general variances. I do still anticipate a slight increase, probably an additional $100 in that we are still losing quite a bit of money via the department every time we hold a variance, whether it's to the publication fees, whether it's per the per diem, whether it's per, you know, just general staff time and preparing the cases. So we still are anticipating an increase in the fee amounts, but if legal counsel would not be present, it would not be to that amount of 800. So again, I'll bring these issues back to the county administrator and I will bring them back to you guys next month as to what that county administrator has now stated. So and if any of you want to visually, I mean, feel free. So.
Question, Jay. I thought our fees were low to begin with from surrounding counties.
Oh, yes. Yep. Yeah, Bayfield County.
Remember what Ashland was. It was a lot more than ours.
Yeah, I think Ashland's around that 800 range right now. I know Bayfield's at 1,000. I haven't looked at all of them. I, I know when we did look into that, which is probably about three years ago now, we were below median on adjacent counties. And that's where we, we increased at that point. We went from, I believe it was 350 to 500, three, four years ago, just to keep the median.
Yeah, I remember that conversation. It wasn't just in zoning. It was in other areas. I remember Bruce on the was heading up that years ago. All right.
Do those other counties have legal representation at their Board of Appeals at every hearing?
It's about 50/50.
Okay.
And Miguel, when I did the zoning board of appeals, said the majority don't in her, in her estimation.
And you would say that that's, yeah, probably slowly changing the other way, but.
So Jay, do you need our board to vote? Or you just?
No, I, and plus, you know, per the agenda, it's only on as a discussion. So I will obviously, you know, say, you know, this is your discussion slash recommendation as to not have it. But again, if, if any of you individually want to email or, or talk to Mr. Hoff and voice your opinions, obviously it'll go a lot longer than just me being your, your representative agent to him. So.
Yeah, I'll send them an email if you send me his address.
Yep.
I'm a little shy about doing that stuff, but I'll do it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email you guys his contact information tomorrow and I'll, I'll try to send him an email first and just say that, you know, the county board of appeals, you know, kind of made the recommendation that they did not want to have legal counsel present. So I do know that we are still looking at redoing your bylaws within the next few months. So anticipate that.
Jay, your recommendation doesn't need to be a hard, we don't want it. It's more of a, we, we think we don't need it.
Right. I will definitely be diligent, or diligent in my crafting of that email.
Thank you.
Well, you can pat yourself on the back and say they felt that they could ask me zoning questions and I'm going to know more on the zoning ordinance than the lawyer sitting there, which.
Okay. Any other matters before the board? Hearing none, I'll request the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made, second. Laura? Laura, did you second?
I did, Al.
Laura hung up. Okay.
No, I didn't. I seconded.
Turn on your damn mic. All right. All those in favor of adjournment, saying I.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.